We appointed Councillor Cleveland to the Mariner Center Management Board, I don't know, two months ago or more. So I'd like to have a report from Councillor Cleveland from his attendances at the meeting.
All right. Thank you. It's been more than two months since I was appointed to that board. Unfortunately, I have never been invited to a meeting. I've asked about it. Early on, I was receiving updates as to what was going on, but I haven't even been receiving emails in the last period of time. Matter of fact, there was mention, Gil had made a mention that there was a meeting coming up this Tuesday that I wasn't even made aware of. We had discussed before about changing the time of the meetings for accommodation, but at this point, I haven't even been officially placed on that committee, at least as of now. So I'm still waiting to see what's going on. I'd like to see some motion on that or some movement of some kind.
Jerry, you go to the, you hit most of those meetings, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
I get to them, that's what you're asking.
So have there been any meetings in that period of time?
There's supposed to be one. Two weeks ago was deferred, so I think next Tuesday, right? So there hasn't been really meetings for the last six, eight weeks.
Go ahead, Councillor Hood.
So the question, the follow-up question is, what are we as council to do? We appointed our councillor to that board, and this councillor is not being accommodated or afforded an opportunity to appear at the meetings. What do we do?
CAO? Just wondering what the process is.
So I can request through the, through the board chair that the councillor receive future meeting notices and ask him to ensure that occurs.
What about the, what about accommodating schedules and so on? Is there anything, anything we can request in that regard in terms of our councillor's appointment?
So, Your Worship, I can request that the, that the Chair contact Councillor Cleveland.
And make reasonable efforts.
Make reasonable efforts to understand, understand his work schedule, his constraints, and work within it.
So if you will, Your Worship, I'll make a motion that the CAO be authorized to write a letter to that effect to the Chair of the Board.
Good. Second, my councillor Barry. Any discussion on that?
Question?
Question. Councillor MacLeod.
What about, and what about the possibility of an alternate? Is that reasonable to ask? Just throw that out for discussion purposes.
We can go as ex-official anyways, can't we? Or do we have, if councillor Cleveland or any other member can't make a committee.
If I may?
I need some lights, if Jeff's gonna answer this one. Wade, I'll come back to you if you want to give me, give me your light, sir, and I'll come back to you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, the Mariner Center Management Board is a municipal corporation and as such works under the same legislative.
Framework.
Thank you. Framework as, as the town. And so its meetings of its board are open, open to the public. And I've attended a couple, and there are other councillors who are not members who do attend from other municipalities. And so you could, any of you could attend those meetings. And if you wish to be advised, you know, to this extent that we can, that we can get those notices and get them out to you, we can advise you. And you may attend, obviously. There is no provision that I'm aware of off the top of my head for alternate board members, but that doesn't mean that we can't bring that up with our municipal partners. That's not an item for that board to decide. That's an item for the partners to decide. And so if we, and we do have that in some of our other boards, so it wouldn't be a new feature. For instance, we have it at the airport, which is a similar corporation. So if that's something that council wished for us to, to bring to either a group of nine meeting or to write to our partners and ask about, a motion to that effect would be, would be appropriate.
Yeah. Wade, you got a comment on that?
Yeah, I do. Not so much about alternates, but just about the circumstance. And that is when I was first appointed to the board, the general manager of the Mariner Center reached out to me and asked about when I would be available, which I did point out. But he also said that in order for me to serve on the board, someone would have to step down because it's a certain number of people. And I think there's where the problem lies right now. It's not my place to ask for someone to step down by any means. And so I just don't know the political, not so much political, but the actual physical structure.
The mechanization of that, yeah.
Yeah.
And CAO, we have a town election coming up on Saturday, so we will be, I thought it was gonna be, did we already make a decision that the person was gonna get sworn on the, on the Committee of the Whole? Is that farther down here somewheres?
I can speak to that.
Okay, because we are gonna have to change our committee structure because with the unfortunate passing of councillor Dennis, we all took on additional responsibilities. So there will be restructuring of, of some committees, but I know that one's, be the first time that we've had elected officials on there in, in some time, right? Go ahead, Jeff.
Right. It will, it will be, I don't know if we've ever had elected officials on that particular board going back to, to its very beginning. But we did introduce that, and there was good reason to introduce that fairly recently, and that was to create a tighter connection between the board and the councils who fund and own the, own the facility. So councillor Cleveland reminded me that we do have an issue in that we do have three citizens filling three seats at that table. And so the amendment to the municipal agreement is that we would have two citizens and a councillor. And so we have to thank one of our three citizens for their service to that board. And that's something that council will need to consider. Yeah. Trying to remember the questions.
The, the alternate, we took care of that.
Yep. Okay. I'll leave it at that for now.
Oh, the other one was the, the by-election about the committees.
Yes, okay.
And about the swearing in, right?
Right. Okay. So I have drafted a, an email that will be going out to the four candidates tomorrow, just advising them that, you know, that, you know, we're excited. There's going to be an election result Saturday night. Monday is a holiday. Tuesday, I'm offering at their convenience, whoever the successful candidate is, to, to meet with me and to begin to go over some of the very preliminary stuff about, you know, sitting on council. We do have a Committee of the Whole meeting Wednesday, and again, that is in the email that will go out. It's Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock. And so I'm offering, because it's short notice from the election to that meeting, we could do the swearing in. The official results will be, the results will be official on Tuesday. We could swear in as early as Wednesday at our Committee of the Whole meeting. But I'm not being presumptuous that the successful candidate will necessarily be able to clear everything away that quickly. So I'm offering that, and if it's possible, we'll do it. Otherwise, it will be at the regular council meeting in, in June. So in either case, Your Worship, the, the item of, of committee appointments is something we'll have to discuss. And so on the agenda that you will see that comes out for Committee of the Whole next week, I will have swearing in and committee appointments on that agenda with the hope that, that we're able to get our new councillor at the table at that meeting. If not, those two items will be deferred to the next council meeting.
Good. Councillor Hood?
Just on that, I want to inform council I'll be away on Wednesday, so I'll be unable to attend the meeting. I'm gonna be in the other side of the country, actually. But so just if you have a quorum issue, that's all. I'm giving you an alert now. I will not be present for the meeting. I'll ask, I'll ask somebody to express, to excuse me from the meeting, if you will.
She's right there. Wendy's right there.
It's vacation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. I got a question, Jeff, for committee chairs, and I guess you're, it's about medical equipment. Have we ever considered or any, has it ever been brought up about, I heard about a situation today, about a defibrillator in the building?
I don't remember. I know that we have, we have a defibrillator at Mariner Center, and I believe that was funded locally, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know that we've ever had a conversation about one being in this building, although we've talked about many things, you know, from a safety and health perspective. I'm not sure that that one has ever made it to the table.
I think maybe we should have a motion for staff to maybe investigate the opportunity to put one in here. I just, I just heard a story today that was quite interesting and looking around at some people that had some heart issues the last couple of years, Wade, Phil. I'm just wondering, I don't know. It's just, we have a motion, Jim, maybe? Can you craft a motion there to investigate the possibility? Put your, put your light on, councillor.
Thanks. I move a motion to, for staff to look into the possibility of acquiring an AED monitor.
Moved and seconded. Question? Question been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Additions 13A, granular materials tender results. CAO?
Nothing. They're going, they're going to investigate one, getting rid of a volunteer.
Got it?
So, Your Worship, invited tenders were requested from two suppliers for the supply and delivery of granular materials for the 2019 construction season. Responses were received from both suppliers, and the results are summarized below by the manager of Public Works. After reviewing the tenders, it is recommended that the tender be awarded to Aberdeen Paving. Except three-eighth inch pea stone be awarded to Quality Concrete Inc. Provide that the materials meet the required specifications as determined by an independent materials testing lab, and that is for your information and approval.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation. Councillor Cleveland will make the motion. Councillor Hood?
Second.
Second?
Question.
Question been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Transit Service. CAO?
Your Worship, I apologize. I, I had meant to ask to defer that item.
Okay. Have a motion to defer that item, please. Moved by councillor Barry, seconded by councillor MacLeod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 13C is sidewalk, but I see Brenda's here. Brenda, you got something for us? Or you want, do you have a petition? I think she wants to make a little presentation, or she wanted an opportunity to make a presentation to council. And I see that we're actually only 27 minutes into our council meeting, and we might have a few minutes for Brenda to make a short presentation, if that's all right with everybody?
Sure.
Is that good? Good, good. Brenda, you wanna do it tonight? Or we were gonna make it, come on up and say your name, and I think the microphone is on. Did you have a petition for us or no? Brenda, you're all right. You're all right. You're, we're only being streamed. I don't think we're on live TV tonight. So you're not bad. If it was last week, you would have had to worry. Do you have a petition?
Oh, yeah.
Brenda? Do you have a petition for us or no?
Yes, I have, I have all these papers waiting.
Okay. You can do, you can just say a couple of things, whatever you got to say, and then you can give it to us afterwards.
Okay.
Take your time, man. We're good. We're not gonna yell, scream, or bite.
Okay. Exclusive committee engagement was conducted. Numerous people signed a petition for the construction of a sidewalk on Haley Road from Argyle Street to Stars Road. Approximately 1,800 unique signatures. It was found that multiple, that multiple stakeholders and groups will benefit, including Yarmouth High School, the Wesleyan Church, residents at Ocean Breeze Estates, the town of Yarmouth at large, due to interconnection with the rest of the sidewalk network. And pedestrian safety in this area will be greatly enhanced from this project. And the community needs are both local community and community at large need a sidewalk system that provides a safe way to walk around town and stay physically fit. This need also has a time constraint. This project should be executed at the earliest convenience for the town, given the risk of pedestrian traffic in this area. In talks with the residents at Ocean Breeze, it was discovered that this is a strong safety issue for them. The timing of this sidewalk build is crucial for maintaining quality of life for the people in this area and the town at large. There is also an economic benefit connecting pedestrian traffic in the residential area to the commercial area on Stars Road. And the recommendations are Phase One approach from Argyle Street to Forest Street, Phase Two, Forest Street to Parade Street, and Phase Three, Parade Street to Stars Road. Advanced scheduling, which has construction completed as quickly as possible. Further community engagement to determine which phases are completed first prioritization. Maintenance and snow removal programs are developed, developed in construction, in conjunction to this construction. The residents at Ocean Breeze recommend an eastern alignment on Haley Road. Conclusion, sidewalk must be built on Haley Road from Argyle Street to Stars Road. This work must be timed to meet the community needs, and the community has been explicit in describing that the work should happen as soon as possible.
Right on. No, you did good. You did good. And I think probably, everybody's probably gonna chip in here, and maybe Charles is gonna say a word or two also, because it has been on our radar. We have, Charles done some preliminary costing out there, and you talked about Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. That's something that Charles and Dave before Charles talked about also. I know councillor Barry, myself, and anybody that campaigned the last municipal election in the Forest Street, Argyle Street, Haley Road area, even as far down as Ellis Road, talked about the need of a sidewalk because that is our fastest growing part of our community is the Ocean Breeze Estates area. We have, Jeff kind of, I'm not gonna say, I don't wanna get Pam in trouble or myself in trouble, but it is something that I in trouble, but it is something that I think has been discussed here, it is on the radar. The, for doing it this year is probably, if you can look at the budget that we passed tonight, it is not in that, but it is on the radar for next year.
All right.
We have some opportunity, we got some extra gas tax money this year. There's other opportunities to look at other areas of funding, like you talked about economic benefits, you can talk about environmental trails, you can talk about active transportation trails, which are, if you look on Pleasant Street, which are wider, instead of cement or concrete, they're wider paved areas. There is some ownership issues on the, between Forest Street and Parade Street, right? So maybe, if you had discussions, preliminary discussions with the Westleyan Church, and you put it on the inside of the fence or the rock wall for safety reasons, that might make it safer again, might be a little less expensive, probably Charles, would it? Would it be less expensive putting it on the inside of that fence?
Yeah.
Instead of building out on the road, and I'll leave it to the engineer, why don't you just, maybe just say a couple words of, of where we're at with that?
Sure.
Because, Brenda, we hear that quite a bit, next to the potholes and some of the street stuff, that is our biggest topic that we hear about.
I agree with you, your worship, there. So the total project budget, I don't have it off the top of my head, but we're looking at each phase is around four, 450 for each block, so it's quite pricey, but as you say, there's, there may be ways to reduce the cost by making some property deals with the various owners there, so we can take a look at that, and as things progress and we get closer to next year, we can, yeah, provide some options.
Yeah, and of course, Counselor Barry, being principal at the high school, there is some, Don, you wanna talk about that, maybe some safety concerns coming up off of Forest Street as well?
I think Counselor Mooney already talked about, it's been on our radar all the way through Alice Road, and we're hoping to, we've been pushing and pushing and pushing, and now we're at the budget stage, now we're at, looking at the costing out of each individual section. We also had some discussion on where we would start, so at least we've narrowed down to where you would like it to start, and probably where we would like it to start, I guess we might be moving on that sort of wavelength, and then the construction will hope that we'll get start right, right away, we hope, in, in the new year, or in the new budget.
Yeah.
New budget.
But it's something that's on Charles', it's something that's on the engineer and on our radar, because it's something that we really would like to see, and you talk about interconnectivity, we got the Broadbrook Trail, we got that Maude Lewis Trail, and I notice how many kids walk across the top of that street, going to the Petro Canada and going across the top that way at lunchtime, right?
Yes.
And you see some scooters out there, and it is a safety concern, and it is a-
School-wise, we have 830 kids or so, so if you just think the 830 kids, a large majority of those are always walkers for lunch, and then you look at the development that's out there as pedestrians and people that live in that area, it has really grown, so we need to start focusing on physical activities, one of the major pushes in the world, and I think by, this would only enhance older generation along with the younger generation doing some physical activity in the walking range, maybe in the biking range, maybe in that kind of sort. So I think we're, we're on the same wavelength, it's great that you did your, went out and did the extra mile for us, I think you've done a great job of rallying the troops to get enough people involved and, and knowing that this is a very important project for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brett, have you got the, if you have the petition or the signatures, if you just wanna leave it on the desk and we can pick it up afterwards, or you can just pass it to Charles, or is already, do you already have that?
We've been scanning them as they've been coming in here, so we got them.
Okay, good. So, well, every committee of the whole, the next couple of months, we'll ask Charles where we're at, we won't, just to see, like he can say, you know, we've done this this month, but it is something that is very important to us.
I have, I have copies of them in my bag.
Yeah, if you just want, you can just leave them right there, and we'll just pick them up, and, and how was the response going door to door?
Yeah.
So, so that means you're gonna be campaigning for next election.
It was time to something, but I enjoyed it.
You campaigned for next election?
Yeah.
Is that what that means? You can say, listen, I wasn't even elected, and I got you a sidewalk built, you'd be a great candidate.
This is the third time that I go to businesses for two benefits, and now for this.
Yeah, that's good, you did a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job, you did a great presentation tonight, so thank you very much. Plus, the other thing, we're, we're gonna maybe ask if you wanted to come back, but you, it's like pulling off the Band-Aid, you got it all off in one fell swoop, and you did a really, really good job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, approval of the invoices. Moved by Counselor Barry, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, date of the next meeting. Counselor, Counselor Cleveland?
This is something that's not on the agenda, but it's something I'd like to mention as we hit the end of our agenda, and that is the fact, and it's been mentioned before, that of course, we're in the midst of an election right now.
Yeah.
It's a completely digital election, all electronic balloting, it's very, very easy to do, if you have your PIN number, of course, it's simple as can be to make it work, and we've done very well with elections in the past when it comes to the amount of people who have done elections electronically, it has increased the amount of voters who have made that, but it seems a bit on the low side this time through with the by-election, and so I'd just like to take a moment to encourage everybody in the general public to take the time and vote. It is very important. I hear every day about people who have things, critical and otherwise, to say about how the town is run. Whether you support, whether you're against, whether you, whether you, whatever, whatever it may be, please vote, because that's the only way that you're going to be heard, your vote counts, very much so. We have four people who have been willing to put themselves out there to run in this by-election. The final day of voting is on Saturday, there will be a new counselor sitting right here the next time through, I'd like to wish them all luck, there are some that are in the audience right now, so we wish them all the very best, but please vote. If you don't have a PIN, call, if you're not sure about how to do it electronically, come here, you can vote right here down in the basement, they have it set up for you to do so, please vote.
You know, one other question, I encourage everybody to do the same thing, and I'm gonna do it on Facebook as well.
Mm-hmm.
What about Counselor Cleveland, maybe one or two words about the symposium coming up on the planter symposium?
Oh, okay.
What about, and the naming of it, and can you just give us a little?
With the symposium, the, the symposium, symposium hasn't been officially named for anyone.
That's right, okay.
Yeah, but we do have a symposium coming up on the first of June, this is Communities in Bloom, and of course, Communities in Bloom's been very active for the past while, this is a small one, this is on doing, hanging baskets and that kind of thing, so growing there, and there's a presentation that's being put on, it's on from 10:30 until noon time, at 9:30 at the Public Works Building, this is all happening at the Public Works Building, by the way, and so there's a symposium going on from 10:30 until noon, there is a free compost giveaway from 9:30 onwards, so anybody who wants compost, it's, it's good stuff, trust me on that, it's really good quality stuff, and it will help your plants grow, so that's coming up on the first of June, and we'd love to have a big turnout for that.
Yeah, good, thank you, Counselor. Counselor McLeod?
I read the election, I wanted to echo Counselor Wade's words. On my walkabout every day now, I run into 10 to 15 people around town and encouraging, I ask them to vote, even if I don't know them, I've asked them to vote, and about half of them are not, are, haven't voted yet, so I have a little bet on, I don't think I'm gonna make my bet, but-
How much percent, what did you say the percentage was gonna be the people who voted, Jim?
Seventy percent. So, Mike, do, do we know where we are, how many people, do you have that information yet? Twenty-nine? So 29%. Two days ago, Friday and Saturday, my bet doesn't look very good, so I need you people to help me make, look good, right, Steve?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, C A O?
Yeah, just, just on that topic, I'll just throw this perspective at you, is that if you went out in the street on your walk, Jim, and you told 70% of the people you met that they would not have the right to vote in the next municipal election, they'd be outraged, and yet 70% in this municipal election have decided not to participate yet, so hopefully they'll think about the, the fact that they actually have a privilege they wouldn't wanna lose, but yet they're not exercising it.
Just, just to carry, just to carry on with that, I think the change to voting via the computer, as Wade has suggested, is very easy, but I wish people would try it, because sometimes people, like myself, can be afraid of parts of the activity, what a computer can do for me, somehow or other, I want people to get out there and try it, Wade, you know, they, and just go there, and it's, it's really easy, even I'm surprised-
Yeah.
-at how convenient it is.
I think Jeff got a good point on this, too.
Yeah, so the other, the other statistic that we know from the last electronic election, and is holding true this time, is that 20 to 25% of people who are voting are actually using a telephone, so you can use a computer, you know, and, and that is, that is easy, but you can also use that familiar, you know, telephone, which, you know, it's, we're all used to, you know, press, press a button for, for different menu choices, well, that's the way it walks you through the election process, is, is just by pressing buttons on your phone, so there is that option, 20 to 25% of the people who do vote use that option.
Good. Anybody else? Next meeting is June the 13th. Thank you, everybody, motion to adjourn. Hi, Joe.
Joe.
Got Joe on there?
Joe, yeah.